It is now 6:30 on Monday, June 14. We will call the meeting to order. All board members are present with the exception of Jill Lebo, who we will get on the phone. We'll start it off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome, everyone. Put the camera on our audience out there. We've got our new superintendent in the audience, Pat Mykonin.
Mickinon.
Mickinon, I'll get it. Not before I leave. And of course, our high school principal, Eric Norton, and Adam Fisher, who will be our new elementary principal. Yes. All right, we will go ahead and start by approving the agenda and/or any changes to the agenda. We will add, under Consent Agenda, we'll add Item H, which is to approve the Department of Social Services contract, which is the annual contract with DSS for the auxiliary placement services. We'll add I, cast ballots for the SDHSS Board of Control. And then, under D, to declare surplus items, we'll add Item 5, under Consent, the Wyatt test materials to Special Education surplus items. So with the changes to the agenda, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve.
Move by Mahoney and second by Leishner to approve the agenda with changes. Any other discussion? Hearing none or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
All right, well, next we'll move on. Any conflict of interest, disclosures, or waiver requests? Having received none, we'll move on to approving the Consent Agenda. And under the Consent Agenda is to approve the minutes, accept the financial reports, approve claims, those without the conflicts of interest, declare surplus items, those are 29 student desks, 14 posture chairs, 13 music stands, special educations material, and Wyatt test materials to Special Education surplus. And then approve our speech-language service contract agreement from Avera. Approve our Head Start Classroom Partnership Agreement. Approve lane change, and that's Brook Seiler completing her masters, her BA plus 15 to masters. Approve the Department of Social Service contract and the ballot for the SDHSS Board of Control. Having heard the Consent Agenda, would anyone like anything removed? Not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second. Moved by Leishner and second by Paul to approve the Consent Agenda. Any other discussion? Hearing none or in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carried.
All right, we're going to move on to correspondence and public commentary. All right, hearing done. We are going to recess to do a tour of the building. So it is now 6:35, and we will close this session for a tour of the building.
Good job. So just quick, you're on speakerphone.
Okay, sounds good.
We just got done with the tour.
Okay.
They put you on the buildings and grounds?
To help with the custodians to get the school ready for the first day of school.
And clean out all the tunnels.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right, it is now 7:45. We have just returned from the tour of the building, and we will continue with our agenda. Item 9 is good news. So we will have our principals come forward.
Really about all we have is state track. We did well when we went up there, Mr. Ruding. You can probably give us a little bit of update on that. Although, I don't know what our two points were for sure.
We had placers and field events running, a couple of relays. H-30 got 7th in the 400. We had Lindsey got, what was it, the mile? Placed in the mile, one of them and not the other. Allison Zibart placed in the triple jump. Couple of relays, few relays placed in different. I don't know exactly what places, but good showing. But I mean, we took the most kids. We've taken a long time, those 30 total kids, didn't stay track me.
Yep, and then girls golf went up to state and also performed their best two rounds of the year. So placed 27th as a freshman and then...
28. They were back-to-back, weren't they?
Yeah, so they tied for 27.
Yep.
Don't give them that 28.
Right, right.
They tied for 27. No, so that's freshmen and sophomores. So they did a great job while they were up there, too.
Great. And we have Adam Fisher. He's our new elementary principal. And if nothing else, I know he might not have anything to announce, but so everyone gets a chance to see him again.
Sure, yeah, no real news except that I'm here, so I'm excited about that. Got all our stuff moved in here on Monday of last week and just unpacking and getting ready to go for planning and figuring out for the upcoming year.
Great.
So that's all I have to report.
Well, we're glad to have you and welcome.
Well, thanks.
All right. Shane, do you want to say anything? I know we don't have staff reports.
I have staff report, but yeah.
All right, and I don't see it on here, so we'll go ahead and do staff reports. Oh, yes, under information.
Yep.
Yeah, as for me, for staff reports, as we got our summer school started, that's running smoothly right now. And we also have Ms. Wegyhop is working with some students in conjunction with those ESAR funds and trying to fill some empty spots there.
Thank you.
How many kids are in summer school?
How many kids are in summer school here?
I've got two in the junior high.
28, I think, in the elementary. Didn't that sheet say, Craig, that I gave you today? I think there's 28 scheduled for the elementary.
So, yeah, we're all in. The building's busy, even though it's in the summer. There's things going on all over. We've got camps.
With 28 kids in the elementary and Adam, you know, just coming on, who's handling that?
Well, we've got teachers. So Mr. Yost did all the scheduling and everything prior to his leaving, so I think everybody's in the loop on that.
So the teachers just stepped in?
Yep, yep. So we got teachers coming in in July. None here in June. They're going to do the Learning Law Summer School in July. I think ESY, that's the Special Education side of it, that's in July as well.
Actually, she's serving this, coming.
Oh, she is, okay. You know, for my report, you know, Mr. Mickinon came in last week and spent a day here. Pretty overwhelming, I'm sure, you know, just trying to get a lot of information to him and share everything that we're trying to accomplish here or what we've tried to accomplish and let him kind of decide how he wants to take the district next. I shared one thing with him that, you know, other than some of the capital projects that I would suggest, you know, be considered. Another project that I think he needs to look at or the board should look at is what? I don't even know what to call it. Keys for the building, let me put it that way. So who has access to the building? Who should have access to the building? How long should they have access to the building? And I've got a number of bullet points with these leading questions that I've showed Mr. Mickinon. And I think we need to try to get control and an understanding of who has all of the access and when should they give that access up. For example, we may have an assistant coach that coaches one season, and they're from the community. Should they have a key all year long? Question, something to answer. Should a teacher's spouse be able to use their key to access the building to bring their children in to use the facilities? Youth sports program, they obviously need a key to use the facility. Should they have to give that key up then at the end of each season? So there's a lot of these leading questions that I think Adam and Pat will benefit from if you guys can help walk them through them and provide guidance. Now, you know, it could be, no, let's leave it open, or it can be, we're going to lock it down. Whatever that decision is, I think if you can help give them that guidance, they will benefit from that. And also, I think the community then can see, you know, what those expectations are and, you know, can I check out a key if I want to use the facilities for whatever reasons? You know, things like that. So I think that's an issue that needs to be addressed. It's kind of come up in the last month, so I throw that out to you. One of the other things, the consolidated application, and I've told Craig this. Typically, I get that done sometime in late July because I really dislike doing it. It is done, so Mr. Mickinon won't need to deal with that. I just need to submit. 611 and 619, those are the Special Education funds that come from the federal government. The application has not come out yet for that, so that's probably one thing that will not be done before I leave. The ESAR applications, some have been completed. Our ESAR 2 application has been completed. We've uploaded some of the supporting documents that the department is wanting. I think they're really in a mess right now. I don't think they know what they know, and they don't know what they need. And a lot of it is dealing around construction projects and all of the federal requirements regarding construction projects. So my understanding is they're looking for an engineering firm that they can contract with to analyze all applications. So I don't know how long this is going to drag out, but in any case, our HVAC application is out there. It is in, and I still think, I think it's a highly likely that that's going to be approved. I mean, they specifically state HVAC in the guidance, so I feel really good about that. My last day, and I got double-checked with Craig, but I think it's Wednesday of this week. And then I'll be taking vacation, and my vacation will carry me through the end of the fiscal year. So as of Wednesday, I plan to turn my keys in.
Can you explain a little bit more on what the consolidation application is?
Okay, so the consolidated application, so we get federal title monies, as they're called, and we get these annually. There's Title I, Title II, Title IV, and I think that's it. So Title I is our math and reading supplementary programs. So students may be not performing at grade level, and they don't qualify for special education because their needs aren't that great, but they qualify for some additional help, and that's Title I. We provide Title I at both colonies and, of course, here at the elementary. Title II and Title IV are funds, and we're small enough where we can consolidate those monies. What is it, about $60,000, Craig? About $60,000 total, and it's called REEP. So we can combine those monies and use them basically for any Title I-type activity or any of the activities allowed under Title II or Title IV. But we use most of those monies for Title I-type activities and class size reduction.
So Title I for our home, are they just brought to here?
So, great question. We get about $190,000 this year in Title I dollars. We do not bring them here. We hire a teacher there. So the math teacher that's there is a replacement math class, so they actually go, so that's taken care of.
I know you have mentioned here in the colonies, but I would imagine they need to be there.
And they do, they have that. That's pretty much consolidated application.
I really wanted for our new folks to...
And, you know, yeah, yeah.
So getting back, Shane, to with the state being somewhat of in a disarray on not knowing exactly how the funds are going to be allocated or spent, does that affect our engineers on...
So one of the questions, and I posed this question to them directly. We submitted our application under ESAR 2 for $647,000 for their part of the HVAC project. And one of the things they asked us for before approval were the final drawings and specifications. And that was a problem for me. And the reason is, we're going to spend $70,000 in engineering fees
That's my point.
to come up with drawings and specifications. So I reached out to them, and I said, I really don't want to spend $70,000 and have you tell us, no, your project doesn't qualify.
Right.
They're really hem-hawing on that because what you have, you have two education people that don't know a lot about construction, don't know a lot about federal regulations with construction, trying to provide us guidance. So they're feeling their way. We have two options. One other thing that they told us was we needed multiple quotes for the engineering services. And I told them, what happens if we've already signed a contract? Now you're telling us we need multiple quotes. Well, can you go get another quote? Well, I've tried, and of course, you can imagine no one's really interested in providing that at this point. We have two options. We can either continue moving and paying for that services out of the ESAR dollars, or you could pay it out of your capital outlay expenses. And then you don't need, it's a professional service, you don't need additional quotes. So I think, you know, you've got to fall back there if that ever becomes a problem about the multiple quotes. Pat, do you know any different about the, what they're saying about giving us the go-ahead, final go-adids? I think we're a ways away yet, but...
On Thursday, during the Department of Ed's webinar, our superintendent's over there, essentially said that that engineering firm are working with them to be patient, but do not go down the road unless you have your application formally approved. Which is a word of caution, which I guess, if you look at it, I would agree with. I mean, because if something goes haywire or goes wrong, and they're getting feedback from whoever engineer they decide to go with, and then all of a sudden you're a quarter of the way down the path, okay, now what? So we're in the same boat up there, just hang on, which is frustrating, but until they actually get through that. And I called out there, Shane's got more luck than I have, but I called out there three times, and I've called him out carpet on the webinar in front of God and everybody, give me a phone call, and I still haven't received a phone call. So honestly, I'm with Shane. They don't, I think they're really struggling with how to approach what it is that they're being inundated with through the ESAR 2 app for the most part. And they don't even want to open up ESAR 3 or ARP until ESAR 2 is taken care of, so...
So right now, our engineers are on hold. They haven't turned a, I was going to say a wheel, but they haven't drawn a line yet or anything. So at some point, they're going to probably ask for the go-ahead. And I guess we're going to have to provide them with some answer at some point. But again, if we want, and we want to get a bid, you know, you could go ahead and proceed, but you may end up holding that, you may end up paying the $75,000 engineering fees. But if you're going to get it to bid, you know, they're going to need to start work at some point, too. So that's where we are. Now, if that answered your question, John?
Yeah, probably what I get one of your...
Probably not what you wanted to hear, but that's where we are. And we're not alone. Every school district's that way. You heard Pat say my burn was the same.
Sure.
Jill, if you have any questions, please just holler out.
Will do, yep.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, we'll move on to our medical marijuana policy.
So I put this on here for one reason. You will need a medical marijuana policy before the school year starts. There isn't one in your packet. And the reason is, the Associated School Boards is working on a draft for schools. And there are a lot of regulations with this, so the policy, I think, is a bit more complex to draft. We got an email from the Associated School Boards. They're working on it. They hope to have it by the end of this month. So, you know, if we get that, or if Pat gets that, we'll get that out to you to take a look at. And, you know, before school starts, you should probably adopt that. And if it hasn't had three readings, what we've done in the past is we've adopted it and then held readings in case we wanted to amend anything. So that's coming, and that's something that'll need to be taken care of before the school year starts.
Any questions? All right, we'll move on to action items. On the agenda is to approve claims, those with conflicts of interest, which would be me. First one is BJ Bussing for $23,907.66. And the second is the city of Parkston, which is $525.15. With that being said, I need a motion to approve.
Second. Moved by Mahoney and second by Leishner to approve those bills. Any other discussion? Hearing none or in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign. Motion carried with McKean abstaining.
All right, next is the second reading of our transgender policy. It's included in our packet. This was per the governor's executive order requiring a transgender policy. Everyone had an opportunity to read it. Does anyone have any changes or questions?
This policy was provided by the Department of Education, so that's where it came from.
All right, I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
This is the final reading, isn't it?
It's the second.
Second, so there wouldn't be a motion?
No, I'm sorry. Next month will be a final reading.
Adopt it, yeah.
All right, next is to approve the supplemental budget, and that was provided to us in the packet.
There was one change with what was in the packet, yep. And again, so for the board members that are coming on board, so the board will adopt a budget in September. And what happened this past year was all these COVID dollars came in from the federal government. So we had a lot of expenditures that were not in our original budget. So they have to run a supplemental budget and identify where the means of finance is coming from. And as you'll hear, it's primarily federal COVID dollars or state COVID dollars. There were a couple line items over that weren't. But normally, we don't see very significant changes, but this year, the numbers are larger just because of the component. Craig, talk to you about it.
Okay, so yes, as you look across here, the function code 10, 11, 11, those are the function codes, and those are based on one-line items in the budget. And as you can see, the elementary is rather large. A lot of that has to do with the stipends that we gave. And what else was there? There's a couple other. The beginner garden, teacher at the school, there are some of those things that are funded with CRF money. And so I noticed that, if you look, the means of finance, none of them say CRF. Because remember, the COVID relief fund money, that stuff was, you didn't have to track that. That was basically funds that they, you guys were assumed to be spending.
Those were state dollars that the governor allocated to us in addition to our state aid. And I think we had about $244,000.
So that's why there's no means-of-finance CRF, because those aren't, but that's the money we used to pay for those stipends that you gave the teachers and things like that. The high school ESAR 3, that next second line item, 1131 there, $1,500, that was the summer school that Mr. Norton was talking about with Ms. Wegyhop at the high school end. Next one, title was off by four grand. Well, we have your title, our home teacher, you have your title, teacher, you have your title aid, all those you gave stipends to. Once again, COVID was the one that caused that. Nursing services, the next one, 3,500, we talked about already. Instructional staff training services, part of that was because that's where they wanted me to code the reopening committee dollars that we had at the beginning of the school year. You had that committee set up, so that was off a little bit. Legal services, audit service, that was my fault. We just overspent on legal services by $500 and the audit service. Actually, it was, one of them was $100, and one of them was like $300 total. But just to be, say, I just, you know, this is a budget line item to adjust the budget. Operational maintenance and services, that was $70,000. Well, a lot of that was, that's where the hand sanitizers, all the air purifiers, those types of things that we purchased got coded to.
And all the training expenses.
Yeah, so...
Which were significant this year.
Yeah. Recruitment and placement services, that's where we paid for our background checks. That was, we had a lot more substitutes needed at the beginning of the year and things like that, new teachers. We had a lot of new teachers. These are just background checks, Barb. Yeah, just background checks here.
Wow.
And it was off by like $700 or $800 and some dollars. Usually, I only budget $750 for that. Payments to unemployment, state unemployment, we had a 40, over $4,500 unemployment that was caused because of COVID. Somebody who went and draw unemployment, they go back 18 months, we had to pay for some of that. And we don't ever budget any of that, anything on that line item normally because it happens, I think it's happened a total of three or four times in my career of doing this total.
So if I can ask you, that $244,000 or whatever that Shane was talking about, how much have we spent of that?
I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Would you guess?
For sure. Of that, I couldn't even guess. I have, it's been so far away from me looking at that CRF money to remember.
When does it go away, or do we...
We, it doesn't go away.
That's what I was...
We don't have to track that. We receive that money. That's one of the reasons why your cash balance is high.
So you have a separate account for the CRF line?
No, we just put it in the general fund.
You just put it in there, and so how are you keeping track of it?
We didn't have to.
But just by line item, you would really have no idea how much of the CRF is...
I mean, I could go back and total up things, but we didn't have to provide line items for the state for that money, to get the money.
But you could give an idea.
I could give you an idea because the nursing services...
He was out of more information.
Yeah, sorry, I just can't give you an actual. I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be right. But most, I mean, 95% of those were all due to the COVID issue. I mean, I'm not saying we wouldn't have had an elementary mishap where we maybe were off a couple thousand dollars or then, you know, maybe it's $5,000 or something like that because we always have some line items in the supplemental budget. But the reason why those two are so big, you take on all your elementary teachers and pay them $1,000 stipend, that's going to be a chunk of that. They got coded to the 1111. So I must have had more budgeted in the high school end than I should have. Hence the reason why the high school did not have a problem. But we did move one aid from the high school down to the elementary, too. So I don't know if that was maybe part of the reason, too.
You know, just, John, if you add ESAR 1, which is $146,000, plus the CRF, which is $244, you got $390,000. So you can kind of look at this and see that, you know, there's certainly dollars remaining, there's, there's certainly dollars remaining, you know, how much. I'd have to guess, but a lot of it was where those dollars, I haven't got it. Yep.
Um, so the means of finance for all the general fund appropriations, of all those line items I talked about, 34,117 was the S R one grant that we had to provide, um, line items for and send that accounting for, to the state to get the money. And then the $1,500 for the S R three grant for that high school math interventionist for the month of June. The rest of it is cash on hand, which is the CRF for the most part. Um, capital outlay, there was two line items, operations or technology in school, which that was the swivels, the iPads and all that stuff that was purchased with, um, S R one money. As you can see with the means of finance for that. And then the operations of maintenance and services, we, you know, purchased a couple cleaning machines and different things like that. And that was $5,000 over. So cash on hand for that, that we didn't pay for.
So would we, was that be that tax dollars, just reserves, probably?
Yeah, yep.
And could you pay that piece to the busing where we had to sanitize the buses?
That was last year's budget.
Oh, last year.
Oh.
Okay.
Well, the sanitizing, the...
Remember how we said that?
We did not do that for, um, um, S R one, no. That was not part of S R one.
We could have.
We could, right? Because it was maintenance services.
It's six and one and a half dozen dollars at this point, right?
Yeah, it doesn't really matter, right?
Yep. That $2,000 you're talking about?
Whatever we had to pay for.
Wasn't supposed to be more than 2,000?
Yeah, clean out the buses, yeah.
So, which it is not. So I did look at that. Um, special education fund, mild to moderate disabilities, this was the transfer of the aid from the high school down to the elementary and adding, um, another one. We had to add the solar position and stuff like that, those two things. This is the reason why that one was off to begin with. Cash on hand for that. Preschool was off $2,000, a thousand of it, right, because of the stipend. You know, and then the taxes on that. So that's probably, that, I believe that, to me, that's the reason why that one's off $2,000. And that's cash on hand. Remember the preschool is gonna get funded or get supplemented by the general fund here at the end of the year. Because it is, if you look on your balance or your sheet there, it's like $18,000 negative. But we have a transfer out of 34.
The stipends that we gave, doesn't that come out of next budget, not last budget, right? Because it's for next year.
The stipends?
We gave...
I'm talking the Christmas stipends.
Oh, Christmas. Oh, okay, okay.
Yep.
I, I, okay. I was thinking the raise.
So could you go over that transfer out?
Yes. Okay, so the preschool is not self-funded. We do not rate, we don't charge enough to pay for that preschool teacher in there. But I have to budget the preschool teacher in the 53 account. So whatever it is negative at the end of the year, we have to pay for that with dollars from somewhere. Because that 53 is a, um, enterprise fund and those are, that's like 51 and 53, any 50s. 51 is the food service is supposed to be self-contained. And preschool is not. So we have to supplement it. Just like you'd have to supplement your food service if, we're one of the few ser, food service places that don't have, we haven't supplemented for a while. But there's not very many of us that, that don't. And we're just fortunate that we don't have to do that too. But we have to do the preschool.
So when you make that transfer, does that retroactively go back and affect the monthly balances? Because I see like the previous year's balances.
Just in June.
More negative.
Nope. And you can be neg, you just can't be negative at the end of June. So we'll do a journal entry to tran, that transfer because then we have that line item budgeted in the general fund side in the original budget. Okay, but I was off, in the preschool budget itself, I'm off 2,000 on the preschool side, but I have enough in the transfers out on the general fund side. There's a line item that was $34,000 budget, I believe, for that on there.
And you'll take that out of the general fund?
Yep, yep.
Thank you, Craig.
Okay.
I mean, numbers are really good if you're a financial board. We're, we're in good shape. And this was a terrible year if you were a business manager, just because of everything that was happening and trying to keep on top of it. So I think Craig did a nice job.
Did you tell them about the state aid payment, right?
Oh, I did, I did tell them that too.
I thought you had in an email.
I did. Uh, just again, to reiterate, uh, the general fund, you'll notice there wasn't a state aid payment. And that's because it came on June, June 1st rather than the end of May.
Because of Memorial Day. Memorial Day, with some of the smaller banks, they didn't process it at the time, is what I was told by the state.
So if you really wanted to compare that with last May?
Yes.
You should add 176,000 to our cash balance here. Next year you'll have, next month you'll have a double payment is what it'll show.
All right, does anyone have any questions for Craig on the budget as presented? Jill, you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Yep. All right, do we need a motion, Craig, too?
We, yep, to approve that resolution, then we'll have a roll call vote.
Okay, so I need a motion?
So.
Move by Pearl, second by Mahoney to approve the following, that resolution that was read there with those line items. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote. Pearl?
Yes.
Mahoney?
Yes.
Niebo? Leisner?
Yes.
McKean?
Yes.
Um, resolution is carried.
All right. Well, with that being said, um, it is time to move into executive session. So it is 8:15?
Recess at 8:15.
Yep.
Okay.
And we will go into executive session.